One that powers out on College Highway by Bodby. I don't know if we've lost it from Town Hall or not. I noticed you, you became the host Doug and then we lost Rob at about the same time.
So, but I don't know when the recording stopped. Was that just like 10 seconds ago?
I would say only like 10 seconds.
Okay.
I would imagine she'll, she'll come back online at some point because the generator is probably tripping over.
Okay, but I just know that for the purpose of recording of the meeting, um, there may be a 10 second gap. All right.
Well, we have a bad windstorm out there and we have bad weather, so.
Okay, no worries. Okay, so.
The chief can document that for the record.
And we just blame Comcast? Okay. Um, anyhow, and then, um, does anyone have the, I, because I don't have it in front of me that I see is the discharge of lean for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission? Do you know which, what, what the address is for that?
Um. Yeah, it was for, well, I know the name on it. I, I, but I, I don't know what it, it was listed by the street address and it was for the last name Bryant.
Okay, so I need a motion for.
B Y, B R Y A N T. That would be your reference.
Okay, and do you have a dollar amount that that should be?
No, I, I think it, well, it's, if it's done, it's, it's over with. I think the board, what the board ought to do is authorize the chairman to sign off that document.
So you want to make that motion? Thank you.
Do you want to make the motion for the chairman to deal with it?
Russ Fox will second that motion.
Okay, so the next under will move to old business.
Joe Didi, I.
Oh shit.
Russ Fox, I.
Okay.
Oh darn, the recordings restarted and I swore out loud. All right, um. Old business. Somewhere there's a circus looking for their clown.
Actually, that's a good one.
Or a village, I know, and that would be me this today. All right, um, old business, Joe.
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fox.
Uh, Mr. Brown and I are prepared to discuss the sewer abatement policy.
Okay.
And I'd like to say that Randy and Christie did a heck of a lot of work on this. Uh, we found out that, uh, a lot of communities don't have any policies whatsoever. Uh, some do and Randy kind of cherry picked some and we discussed it and we would like to this to be our first reading. Uh, and then the board can discuss it and then we could have a second reading at a future meeting.
Okay.
And Randy's here to give you a, a brief, uh, description or context to it.
Sure. So, uh, we, we looked at about 40, uh, local towns and we looked whether they had policies regarding abatements for pool filling or not. Uh, of those 40, uh, 12 had some kind of a policy in place. I'm sorry, eight had a policy in place. Um, and what we did is we looked at those eight policies, kind of get an idea of what, uh, what those communities allowed. And then, uh, Mr. Fox and I met and discussed and, uh, we thought, well, we tried to figure out what would be a good fit for Southwick. Um, so, and, uh, there was a, an application that I think you have copies of. Um, and I can, uh, I can, um, over that with you basically. Uh, so, um, what are, uh, what our proposal is to allow an abatement for, uh, a pool filling only. So this would be situations where, um, you know, you buy a new pool, you fill it, or say you have to replace your liner and you would refill the pool at that point. Um, none of the communities that we looked at had any, any policies in place where they allowed abatement for periodic filling of pools. Uh, let's say, you know, I got to, you know, the water evaporated for, uh, over a couple of days over the summer. You want to refill, uh, you know, a couple of inches in the pool. Um, that was not part of the policy. Um, this really is for a complete, uh, fill of the pool. Um, just like our, um, final meter reading process, uh, we would take a, uh, we would be contacted by the homeowner. Um, they would fill out this application and then we would take a reading before and a water meter reading after the fill, uh, to verify their numbers. And that would be the basis of their, their abatement and we process that, um, once we, um, uh, when we do the bills, uh, twice a year. And there would be a, a charge for that process. We do, we do charge $25 to, uh, do a final read fee. Uh, so we would start, charge a similar fee, uh, for this process. Uh, it's very similar process as before. Um, so there's no change in that. Um, I think it's fair. Um, certainly, uh, you know, last year we saw a spike in, in water use and I think people were maybe a little more cognizant of their, of their usage last year and that's why this issues came up. Uh, with, uh, I think you had three separate abatements, uh, for a similar request. Um, but I think this, this policy we have in front of you is, is fair. It's in line with what the communities are proposing or what we have in, in place at this time. And, um, you know, residents also have an opportunity to, uh, install a second meter if they would like. Uh, that policy has been in place for many years. Um, so if they want to avoid having any water use, uh, that does not go down the drain, um, and, and not be part of the bill, uh, there's their sewer bill, they have that, they have that chance already to do. So do you have the document in front of you?
I do.
Do you have any questions on it?
Um, I just have one. It's kind of more a leading question. So if someone was, how much is 3,000 gallons of water in dollars?
That, that's about the charge of the meter reading fee, which is $25. So that's how, so, so basically if you're, if you're applying for an abatement and it, and it costs you more to apply for it than you're going to grant, you're going to get, get, get back in, in, in an abatement, it's not worth its while. So that's, that's where that, uh, threshold came in.
That's an excellent idea. So, uh, Joe and Russ, you've seen this, correct? And Joe, have you read this?
No.
So we'll have this set at.
Yeah.
Second reading for next meeting before we adopt it as a policy.
Randy, do you know that if you put a pool in, you got to pull a permit?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For the inspector, yes, above ground and below ground.
So maybe that's where the verbiage should be on that upstairs too. So when the guy pulls that permit, they're aware of that. There's a fee if they're trying to use the town. You know what I mean?
Yeah, we could.
You can have it on your website. We all get it, but it never trickles back to the guy until after the fact.
Yep, we can talk to building department. Absolutely.
That's all. Perfect.
Mr. Fox.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this came about because of a resident that filed an abatement and, uh, I think she's, uh, not only spoke to each of us individually, but also came to one of our meetings. I think at, uh, the last time she spoke, she asked if we would reconsider our denial of her abatement. And based on the information I've seen from other communities, things like that, and the reason she stated was because we didn't have a policy. I don't really think that's a legitimate reason to reconsider. Uh, so I would respectfully, uh, like to tell her that, um, I, I for one would, uh, vote against, uh, uh, an abatement. If we were to reconsider.
And I think that was part of our conversation with, with her and she came to a couple of other meetings asking about that revisiting the policy and we did talk that we were going to, um, revisit the, the policy, but that we, we may or may not have to, we may or may not reconsider her request for an abatement, but that we would, you know, it was a good idea probably to have a policy going forward so that, you know, if someone was similarly situated, that we would have something in place. Either there's no policy that we don't have a policy or we put a policy. So I think it's good that we did this.
Could I, Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that a letter be sent, uh, to the individual saying that this meeting did discuss it? And, uh, we've decided not to reconsider that, uh, a request for a payment.
You're going to do that before you adopt the policy, which you've tabled till next week?
Whatever the chairman feels.
I, I just, I, we can wait till next week to send the letter as well, but I think it's, it's two separate issues. One was there was a request for an abatement which we denied and then there was also a request for us to revisit the lack of a policy. So we put the policy in place. We will have the policy in place next week, but the separate discussion as to revisiting, rebating something that happened in the past that we really can't verify what went on. I think it's just the way to, it's probably the proper course of action. I don't, my, my opinion hasn't changed either. As far as that we should be doing it without any type of oversight of what happened. Um, I think the term slippery slope keeps coming up, but, uh, I, 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 I'm not opposed to, to leaving it how it is on that. But if we want to wait till next week to vote on it both together so that it's cohesive, I'm fine with that too. So we'll carry this forward to next week and we'll take them both on at the same time. Okay. Carl, uh, where were we with old business? Mr. Fox, I think we were with you, correct?
That was, I believe the only thing, uh, we're still an ongoing process on the green energy program. Um, so other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any old business.
Okay. Um, since we're on policies, next page. Huh?
I have old business.
I'll come, I'll come, I'll get to you, I promise.
Keep your hand up.
Keep your hand up. Actually, you don't need to. Um, we had discussed previous, uh, crafting a town crier policy. So you have in your folder a copy of the updated town crier policy again for a first reading. Um, and basically the, the short of it is, is that, um, the town crier electronic sign shall be operated safely and in substantial compliance with the town bylaws that govern electronic messaging signs. The current bylaw exempts the town. Um, but the select board has adopted this, will adopt this policy so as not to exempt itself from a bylaw imposed on others except as provided herein. And basically the short of it is, is that, um, we'll subject ourselves to, uh, the message turnover rate of no, not less than 10 seconds, uh, before the sign changes, no animation, scrolling, flashing, blinking, animating, et cetera. Unless there's an emergency that exists in the town of Southwick that requires us to absolutely get everyone's attention with flashing, blinking, scrolling, whatever, at less than 10 seconds. So, um, but general, you know, welcome to Southwick, the time and date, Girl Scout cookies, other town meeting notices, whatever that's up there will be at 10 second or more intervals with no blinking, flashing, et cetera. So no moving graphics, wavy images, et cetera. It's a one pager. It's very straightforward and it just basically gets rid of the do as I say, not as I do, that the town put itself into for that, uh, the existing sign bylaw. The planning board themselves is actually is considering removing the town's own exemption. Um, but we, I think this is, this does the job as well and it would also bring the town into compliance. If the town, the planning board were to submit a zoning change to change the time that signs can display, this would roll with that as well, but no fewer than 10 seconds in any regard. So I'd like to submit this to the board for consideration as this is the first reading and then have a second reading, um, and potential adoption next week. Comments? Thoughts? Okay, Carl, you have old business.
Yes, I believe, um, you and I had met with the, uh, the police and fire chiefs regarding, uh, more research we were doing on, under the, uh, regionalization of dispatch issues in that we were going to recognize the chiefs who have done some follow-up, uh, research, phone calls in meetings with people. So we could see what other actions, uh, the chiefs would like the board to undertake.
Okay, so we should recognize the chief bishop or chief Anderson at this time? Who wants to go first?
Yeah.
We'll go alphabetically then. Anderson?
So, um, as you, as you're aware, we, we did have conversations, uh, Westfield had requested we look at them uh, for part of this, uh, as a different option for the regional study. Um, we've since had a couple of different meetings, a lot of emails going back and forth. Uh, we have another meeting tomorrow that could be, um, could tell us a lot with the actual E911 piece that person. So that may, may help us in guidance, but I think, uh, the, the problem is any moving forward with Westfield would require a letter just like we did with, um, Westcom so that they can apply for said grants. So, um, that's about it in a nutshell. Do you agree, Kevin, or what are we missing?
No, you got it. Uh, basically it came down to just a little more research came forward. Westfield heard that we're, you know, kind of looking or out in the field again for regionalization. Um, they've offered their services and would like to again, get on board with us again to, uh, become part of a grant process for, uh, for funding, uh, for us to join possibly them for regionalization down the road. Um, we verified some points that we can be on listed on both grant applications without any type of, uh, penalties. It's completely illegal and above board for us to be on those boards. So again, this is just a letter of interest. It would be no different, like I said, like Russ said, with Westcom right now, it just goes in there if our name goes on it. And, uh, then the, it's up to the state on if they would fund both options, one option, none. Um, but we'd like recommendation for us to at least sign a letter of interest at this point in time.
So I think, you know, based on our conversations that we had last week, chiefs and Carl, um, with Westfield and others, I think that obviously it's nice to feel wanted. Um, and this is a, a great idea to track. You know, perhaps put us in a position to talk to Westfield a little more about what potentially we could work together. Obviously, Westfield's, uh, you know, a key ally there, our neighbor to the north. We've been, we do a lot of stuff together, mutual aid. Um, our fire department covers the south end of their town right now with their bridge being busted. Um, and there's a lot of stuff going on between the two communities. Westcom has a very strong proposal in front of us, but there are still some concerns that are being worked on. Perhaps this would be something that would spur them to sweeten the pot in that regard. We don't know. But so I, from where I sit and based on our conversations, I see, and there's no real downside at this juncture. I see no reason why we shouldn't enter into at least a letter of interest to enable Westfield to be able to submit an application to E911, um, for some, um, grant funding around enablement. This is not a feasibility study, right? I think there was very clear to everyone that from a feasibility stu- study, there's no point. It can be done. It's just a matter of the how, right? So, um, and this hasn't really changed anything. You know, I know the chiefs have been working an action item list of overall concerns and this would apply to anyone, whether, whether it was Westfield, whether it was our own dispatch, whether it was Westcom of things that we need to continue to work towards. So with that said, I'd entertain a motion to issue to allow the chair to sign an LOI, to investigate potential regionalization, um, and/or EMD coverage, um, with the city of Westfield.
Doug, just, just one thing first. We did, uh, we did, uh, in a meeting with, uh, Westcom today, we, we did make them aware that this was happening. She said it was a very common practice, um, and no issue.
I kind of, I mean, it, you know, once this, once this train starts leaving the station, right? I think we, we talked about this a lot, right? I, I, I wouldn't be the, think we'd be the first one to be in this position and I think it speaks a lot to Westfield as well as far as positioning down the road and the way this whole dispatch situation is heading. Um, whether it's now or next year or five years, this needs to be looked at because that's the way that, that this is trending. And so Westfield wants to make sure that they have a seat at the table essentially. So I think it's a good idea to at least go through this. It's, there's no harm, no foul for anyone to at least do the LOI. So again, I'll put it to the floor for a motion to enter into an LOI.
Joe, so Joe Didi will make that motion, but I, I have to say a few things quick. I, I agree with you, Doug. I think this is a better melting pot for us right now. Um, if you asked me this nine years ago and I left Westfield my first week as a selectman, I would have told you we're, we're the ugly stepchild again. Nothing against you, Mike Westcott, but, um, I, I just wouldn't have worked. They didn't want us there. I, and that's the feeling I got. And then to hear that they've actually reached out, it seemed like they've had a change of ownership over there, which is wonderful because beautiful facility. And I don't know if we need to go there 110%. So I think this would be a great stepping stone to maybe Band-Aid us up a little bit where we probably need it because I, I personally think you need a way to have two people somewhere. And I, you know, I know there are one chair. I get that. Maybe we don't need to close our place and maybe we can make, you know, borrow one of their chairs. Whatever that world's all about. We, me and Russ haven't been in every second of every conversation like you guys have yet. So, yeah, I, it's a win-win and hopefully that letter's written and we can, you can sign it and get your ass in gear. So Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep. Thank you. I hope the haze clears over there, chief.
Yeah.
Uh, Carl, more old business.
Uh, yes, that, uh, Mr. Chairman, as you know, at the last meeting, you discussed, uh, the discussions you had had with Mayor Sapelli, uh, the previous Friday regarding, uh, vaccination site at the Big E. So we've been continuing to, um, exchange information with them. And the chiefs and I sat to resume call last Friday with, uh, the sheriff, uh, all the mayors, other town leaders and boards of health and other players, uh, from the Big E in terms of what the logistics will be. And, um, it looks like, you know, each town would be sending EMTs and then helping to pay for some of the operating expenses, not, not rental for any buildings over there, but just the fact that they're going to have to turn on utilities, heat and electricity to be able to man a site. And then some other logistics, you know, having traffic come into the facility and out of the facility safely and queuing up patients and so forth. So that is a follow-up from your meeting of last week.
Excellent. And, um, I did hear, and I don't, I don't, I don't propose nor recommend that they, and that they even consider this, but if you go for your shot at Fenway, they're actually charging for parking at the garage over there. But, uh, and, and, and I also let you know that I was duly excoriated by our board of health last, last Thursday um, for not immediately phoning the chair pursuant to our conversation last Friday. And I gladly took the public beating that necessary for signing us up to participate in a regional clinic at the Big E that would help the residents of our community. So, um, I assume that with the news that the J and J vaccine is now going to be available shortly, that this probably will get enabled sooner than later, but probably not as soon as anyone would like. Is that correct, Carl?
Yep.
Okay.
And have you picked up your mess though with our board of health, Doug? Are they now, uh, is that, they added to the email list? Because I don't want you to get tortured in two weeks again.
Oh, I'm just not going to go to their meetings anymore. They can, they can excoriate me in absentia. That's fine. So we, I mean, we had talked to Tammy. I thought we had done all we needed to do. Apparently I, I didn't go the extra mile. Shame on me. So I'll take full responsibility on behalf of the board of selectmen for that.
So we have other old business.
Correct, we do. Um, we want to talk about the DOT thing or that's not the one you want to talk about?
No, that one Russ is already, Russ is going to give me a couple of bullets, but I know you and I are waiting to hear for an appointment with the legislative delegation.
Correct.
So I have not received any dates from them.
Me neither. I did send her an email asking for those dates because they did say after the 19th and we asked them right after that. So what's your next old business that you'd like to address?
Uh, last week, the board authorized, um, Mr. Fox and I to do the research and file applications for, um, community preservation funding projects.
Oh, yeah.
So as you, as you recall, we had quite a discussion on those as well as potential annual and special town meeting warrant articles. So the, uh, you know, we, we then went in, uh, put everything together to follow up on the issue of, uh, had a, uh, an application submitted, rusted, speak to Mr. Lee Hamburg and his board hasn't been able to meet lately because of the COVID-19 restrictions. But, uh, we did, uh, under Mr. Fox's um, signature and mine file for a CPC application for an assessment of the old slate roof in Coopola at the fire sta- police station, which used to be a fire station. So, um, so that was filed and that's about $5,000. And then in addition to that, we also filed a, uh, another one related to the letter we had got from the uh, estimates for our budget for the town hall roof in that, uh, HVAC unit over the vault to be relocated. So that, um, application is $85,000. So those documents were uh, filed and date stamped before the noon deadline today.
Great.
And that's in, that's in furtherance of your discussion and instructions to us from last week. Is that correct, Mr. Fox?
Correct.
Okay, so that was done.
And this, can someone be? Mr. Fox.
If I could just follow up a little bit on that. We are in desperate need of assistance on the historical commission. Um, we need to publicize that we're looking for Southwick residents, voters that would be interested in participating on that commission because we need an active commission, uh, so that we can address issues like this.
Okay, we should do that and to talk to all your friends. We can put it on the town crier. It'll show up every couple of minutes for 10 seconds. Um, but no, I think it's a great point. I was, what I was going to say before, just before was, you know, if does they not have a quorum, a potential quorum at this time, Carl, or they just are having trouble getting a meeting together with Zoom and everything else?
Uh, well, they have, you have a five-person board. You've only got three members on that board and I believe one of them has been unable to attend meetings.
Okay, because I would say if there's something that we can do to help facilitate a Zoom meeting for them, we'd be glad to facilitate that in any way, shape or form. But so if anybody wants.
We can look into that. I will speak to Lee Hamburg about that.
Okay. Um, I'm carrying on old business is the Southwick Police Department lieutenant recruitment process. Do we want to bring that one back up for discussion and or a motion at this time?
Well, what are we waiting for on that? I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, there's only one or two or one that really was there, I think. I don't think we had much going on, other than I know they, we got a backfill eventually here, right? Is the chief thing done? The land has signed up for six years. Is that all set?
Yes, 2026.
2026?
Yeah, 26 years.
Oh, 26 years. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, his, Lanis is done. So we need to move the, we do need to continue to move that along because it's going to create obviously the vacancy in lieutenant position, which is going to recreate a vacancy in a sergeant position, which will create the vacancy in the patrolman's position, which is going or already at the academy if they didn't leave yet. But we still need to handle the, the rest of the promotional tonga line. So it's probably high time to move that position along.
That's something you're going to do? You need us?
I need a motion.
A motion to?
We have one candidate at this point that's eligible and is interested to take the role.
Okay, so you're looking for, for me to make that motion?
I'm looking for somebody to make the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I guess I'm.
Please.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll, Joe Didi will make the motion to offer employment to, was it Westcott? No, I'm sorry. It was, um, yeah, I got you back, Mike. See, um, Officer Banished, Sergeant Banished, correct?
That's correct.
I'm sorry.
Subject to the yadda yaddas, right?
Yeah, if he even wants it, you know, he's, he's got his own issues, I'm sure. So it's, it's a big step for him and, you know. So, yeah, I'd make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion made and second it is a roll call vote for such a position of importance in the Southwick Police Department. Doug Mowgli, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
It's just weird not interviewing and, and going through the motions that we normally go through and the, the sweat off the foreheads. You know, you kind of missed all that.
Well, I think, I think Sergeant Banish has been sweating it out for two, three months now.
Yeah.
But now it creates, now you get the sweat on the foreheads because now you just created a subject to the yadda yaddas and probation and, you know, pranks and um, hazing. Um, you created a sergeant position. So that's going to create, then you get the sweating of the foreheads and the and all that stuff with that. So we're on to that. Carl, any other old business we need to address tonight?
Uh, no, sir.
Russell?
No, sir.
Joseph?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
So I do believe we have an executive session this evening, correct?
Yes, we have labor council on the line.
Scheduled for 5:45. Turning this into a planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, motion to go into executive session. Um, motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B. And CMR twenty dot oh three one B. Uh, regarding collective bargaining, police DPW, dispatch, fire, IAFF and library units. Deputy Fire Chief and non-union Colas. Um, move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body. And not reconvene an open session, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and not reconvene an open session. And any person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial or serious interference with their privacy. Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Doug Mowgli, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.